All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. A call to order, the Clackamas County Border Commissioner Business Meeting is April 9th, 2015. I'll ask our very able county administrator, Don Crepp, to call the roll.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. We are joined here this morning with county council, Stephen Madcor, and we're also joined here with clerk of the board, Mary Rathke, and of course, I am the captain of the starship Clackamas.
Indeed. I'm your Spock. Yeah, that's right.
So, I'll start with the roll then. Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Here. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Lutlow?
Here. Commissioner Schrader is excused to be in an AOC meeting in Salem. Would you all please rise with me and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first item on the agenda, as it should be most of the time, and we try to make it that, is citizens' communication. I have several cards. Mr. John Valley and Mr. Les Poole. Mr. Valley is here. Come on up, you guys, representing the treasurer's office of state, and he has agreed to give him five minutes, so, Les, don't even ask. But John's gonna be talking-
I'll donate 20 seconds to him.
You're so generous.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so either one of you can start.
Can you hear me okay? Great. I know there's a limited amount of time and a full agenda, so I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, Chair Lutlow and other county commissioners. I was actually at the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting last week to talk about what we're doing with the Oregon College Savings Plan and a pilot program we're working on with the North Clackamas School District. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to quickly brief the commission about what we're doing and how you could potentially support what we're doing and help raise awareness about the importance of college savings and how the Oregon College Savings Plan can be a nice tool to help make college or any type of post-secondary education more affordable. The way the program works, in case you're not familiar, it's a 529 program that was created by the federal government about 20 years ago that allows each state to put together a mutual fund-type program where citizens can put money into a college savings account. All the earnings are tax-free. In Oregon, the plan is the Oregon College Savings Plan. In addition to the earnings being tax-free, there's also a state income tax deduction that an income taxpayer can take. If it's a joint filing, it's a little over $4,500. If it's a single filer, it's a little over $2,200. We're really excited about this new Be College Ready program that we're piloting in five school districts. The five school districts are the McMinnville School District, in the Mid Valley, the Grants Pass School District in southern Oregon, on the north coast, the Seaside School District, in eastern Oregon, the Hermiston School District, and then here in the Portland metropolitan area, the North Clackamas School District. And the way this pilot program is going to work is that we're gonna be partnering with elementary schools and giving them school materials, raising awareness about the importance of college, and we have Be College Ready website that's gonna be launching next week where people can look about financial resources, grants, scholarships. Hopefully you put a little face in there so you can visualize yourself with a cap and gown. In addition to getting these school materials, the elementary schools will put information about how to open up a 529 account in their main office. We'll also be putting information on their website that they can link to our website. During the school year, we'll actually be doing a PowerPoint presentation in partnership with the local PTA or PTO at that elementary school where we'll answer questions. It'll be similar to the presentation that I gave at the C4 meeting last week, but a little more comprehensive. The hope is, is that we're gonna get more people aware of the program. A lot of people know that this is a state benefit. One of the common questions I get is, "Who do you work for? Are you getting some sort of commission for every new account opened?" No, I'm a state employee. It's sort of a public service announcement. Right now, the average beneficiary age here in the state of Oregon for people participating in the program is about 10 years old, so we're trying to lower that. And we think by reaching out directly to elementary schools, working with those principals, teachers, and obviously engaging with the parents, we're gonna help people know that this is a program that can really work for them. We always like to say it's cheaper to save than to borrow, and you want compound interest to work for you rather than against you. So with that, I really wanted to kind of get through that really quickly. I just wanted to see if there were any questions about how the Oregon College Savings Plan works itself or the Be College Ready pilot program with the school district.
Commissioner Smith?
When I was back in the legislature, like, 10 years ago, didn't we come up with the 529 college savings plan? Or we, something was, we did something new to create this. Maybe it was back then, and so us in the legislature-
The legislature in 2001-
Yeah.
-created the program officially, and it's been in place since then, and there's been some tweaks to the benefits-
Right, and so we created it, thought it was a good idea, and I invested in it for my daughter, and then it crashed.
Yep.
What's to prevent that from happening this time?
Yeah, that happened with the Oppenheimer Fund during 2008, 2009. I think that was part of the economic recession, but there was definitely some hits. I, myself, as a parent, took some hits in that program.
So what's to prevent that from happening again?
So what we have-
You don't tell me that you're gonna invest in another fund.
So, there's a, the Board of Directors that monitors the various portfolios that the state has chosen with the help of the program manager, Tia Kref. We are no longer with Oppenheimer. They meet on a quarterly basis. There's an independent consultant that looks at all the different portfolios and the different rate of returns. Their job is to make sure that there is a good rate of return for all the different portfolios. The different portfolios have a more aggressive or conservative thing based on-
I understand investing very much, okay? But there is no guarantee?
No, and I would never tell anyone.
So if they put this in your plan, they could lose it just like any other plan, is my point on this. So with that in mind, I wish that it could be more secure, because bad things can happen. And my daughter graduated in 2009 at a very bad time, and we had tried to help her with her college fund. The problem is when they, it went like this. And, and her question to me was, "I thought you guys invested." "We did." And she didn't understand that. So I think that's interesting. Thank you for trying to do that, but, and because I have been through the system, I have lived this firsthand, everything you're saying. A college education, in my opinion, used to be a very good thing to have. However, four-year universities are pricing themselves really out of the market, and our students are graduating with a very high rate of debt and can't get jobs. Do you think maybe we should have some efforts for job creation? Not that it's the government's responsibility to hire everybody, that's not what I mean, but at least to create the atmosphere so this could happen. I'm just preaching, though you don't have to answer it, but I wanna thank you for trying to promote this.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, my question is, you know, I know there's a shortage of lawyers. What if I, what if I decide at 30, I wanna become a lawyer? Can I start putting money into this plan, or is there an age limit?
There is no age limit. It's an excellent question. I think one of the common views out there is that it's only for young people, and then they turn 18, and if they don't use the account, then what happens to the money? First of all, you can always open an account for yourself, so you can use it for going back to school, you can use it for professional development. So I know there are a lot of people in the nursing and teaching profession that need certifications, you can use it for that. You can also use it for trade schools. It's not just for four-year colleges or two-year colleges, it's for vocational schools as well. And so one of the common questions is if that beneficiary that you identified turned 18 and decided they weren't gonna go to school, or they got a full scholarship or didn't need to use the funds for whatever reason, what happens? What you can do is, you can either change the beneficiary to another sibling or within a first cousin, you can change it to an adult, yourself or your wife, or if you just-
I will say, those flexibilities are very new on that, because it used to be that it had to go to the person you designated.
That is no longer the case.
Yes, that's very new.
And, and so you have that flexibility within the account, or if you decide you just wanna cash it out, which is sometimes what people wanna do, you can do so. There's a 10% penalty from the federal government, but it's only on the earnings, not on the principal, because they're all after-tax contributions.
Commissioner Savis?
John, Thursday night when you were making the presentation to the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, you mentioned one of the funds or programs had someone or of a guarantee or was more secure. Could you explain that?
There's a principal-based option, which is based on, it sort of guarantees a rate of return, but it's only on the federal interest rate. So right now, that's extremely low. We've made a deal with Tia Kref that it can never go below 1%, so right now, it's about 1.2%. So there is that one option you could choose. There is a guaranteed rate of return, but it's usually much lower than the potential other portfolios, but if that's something you're more comfortable with, because you don't wanna have what happened before, back when we had the Oppenheimer situation, then that is something you could look at.
And the principal would be more secure, or would be more secure?
Yeah, it's a much more secure option if you wanted to choose it.
Yeah, your presentation at C4 was much longer, so I appreciate that you're condensing everything here, but, you know, we often talk about this, and we think, you know, it is limited to parents contributing, it is not. Grandparents as well can set up this. And also, one of the things you explained in more detail is that this is not just for four-year universities or even two-year community colleges, this is also for vocational schools, the trade schools, correct?
Correct. And I think it's really important that, I also stress that this is not necessarily to solve all of your post-secondary education costs. We look at this as another tool in the toolbox. So we still encourage people to look at scholarships, grant opportunities. I think what we're trying to do with the Be College Ready program is let people know that this is something that you may wanna look at earlier on and not wait until maybe that high school age when college or any type of post-secondary education opportunity is more prevalent. I also wanted to mention that I will be giving presentations similar to the one at C4, and maybe even a little more in-depth, to employees here at Clackamas County. The HR department is looking to potentially offer a payroll deduction to employees if they want to do an automatic deduction into their 529 account. So that is something that the county is looking at as a potential option to employees, and I'll be talking to employees later this month at Brown Bag Lunch presentations.
Okay. Thank you, John, I appreciate you-
Thank you. And one last thing, I just wanna let you know that Happy Valley passed a proclamation this week declaring September Be College Ready Month. I know if the county wants to do something similar, I presented information to what Happy Valley did, and that's something you guys can look at too if you wanna help support us in a sort of public way.
Thank you, John. I appreciate your presentation, I really do. I gave you a hard time.
No problem.
That's never happened before.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Thank you so much. Great to see y'all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Poole?
Good morning, Mr. Poole. From Clackamas County. I've got a lot of associates that are realtors, and my father and sister both have had Realtors' licenses, so my background is with property. Reason I say that is yesterday was Realtor's Day at the Capitol, and I rode down with a friend, and they had an initial meeting, and Ted Wheeler, the state treasurer, spoke. And Ted's a pretty sharp guy, former county commissioner in Multnomah. I think he's got a lot more credibility than, let's just say, some people down there. No names need to be mentioned. And I stayed and testified at a 3 o'clock hearing, and it was about a proposed bill for changing the elections. And obviously, that's something that the county doesn't address, but man, oh man, I suggest you go online and take a look at some of the things that they're doing down there with our money. It's crazy. Speaking of crazy, while I was at the hearing waiting, in came Metro President Tom Hughes, and they're working on a bill and moving forward a bill that will fix, I love that word, "fix," some of the funding mechanisms that they've tried to put together for the Convention Center Hotel. And there's a lot of risk involved in that hotel, and I think it's gonna compete with the private sector. And yes, it would be great to have the final four, it would be great to have more conventions in Portland, but the amount of money they're talking about spending and the number of conventions they're gonna attract in a competitive world, I don't think it works. But a lot of things Metro's doing don't work, and we all know that. One of the things Metro did that hasn't worked is the UGB expansion. And over and over in the last year, you've heard me say, "It's time to reform Metro. It's time to change the statutes that give Metro financial, land use, and planning authority, control of the money, control of population density over the counties and cities." You know, nowhere else in the country does that occur. And while there's a preoccupation with the urban growth boundary, which wasn't part of Senate Bill 100, I know some of the old gentlemen that were involved in Senate Bill 100, which was passed in '73. The UGB was created in 1979 to be a flexible tool, and it's a tool that's been abused, it's been used to constrain growth. And in the case of Damascus, there was a huge expansion and no way to finance or take care of it. And the failings in Damascus, in spite of all of the talk of disincorporation and the infighting, as someone that owns property there and has been involved in the community a long time, I can assure you that the Damascus fiasco is a result of Metro's poor planning. So it's time to change things there. I appreciate the time, I'll wrap it up. He didn't need 20 seconds, so I took my full time. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. All right. Now, Mr. Crepp, we have some public hearings.
We certainly do. The first public hearing of the morning is to consider a proposed Housing and Community Development 2015 Action Plan. I'm going to invite our community development director, Chuck Robbins, up to the dais to give a report and the recommendation.
Just another reminder while we're at it, if you want to speak, fill out one of these blue cards and give it to Mary, and we'll make sure you have an opportunity to do so during the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners, Don, Mary. I'm Chuck Robbins, the Director of Housing and Community Development. This is our annual public hearing to discuss the action plan. The action plan is our actual application to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for community development block grant, home and emergency solutions grant funds. This public hearing has three elements. First is a review of last year's performance of our three grant programs, a review of the proposed 2015 Housing Community Development Action Plan, which you should have included in your packet, a discussion of the 2015-2016 project recommendations, and then finally, an opportunity for citizens to testify on the plan and the county's housing and community development needs and performance. Need to mention that there is no action that needs to be taken today. The plan is currently out for public comment until April 18th. After the public comment, we'll take all of those comments and any comments we receive at this public hearing, we'll incorporate them into the plan, then we will be presenting the plan to the board on April 30th for their approval. The plan has got to be submitted to HUD no later than May 15th. So, let me just kind of work through, I know some of you've heard this before, and I appreciate that. So as I mentioned, we are HUD-funded. The CDBG program, home, ESG are all funds that come out of HUD. We are what is called an entitlement community. That means we automatically receive a certain amount of money based on a formula that looks at population, age of housing, poverty, things like that. It's important to recognize the partnerships that we have with our cities. We would not be able to receive the amount of grant funds that we do if we did not have great relationships with our cities. Every year, or every three years, we enter into an agreement with the cities that allows them, allows us to use their population in our calculation. We just completed that a number of months ago, and I'm happy to say that all of the cities have re-upped again for another three years in the Clackamas County Community Development Program. The handouts you have, I mentioned the action plan, then I also mentioned the two-year project plan. The two, uh, community development works on a five-year strategic plan, and we budget our projects over multiple years. So at the beginning of the five-year plan, which is called the Consolidated Plan, we did a three-year project plan. So now we're at the end of the plan, so we're now doing a two-year plan, and that's what you have in front of you today. So our consolidated plan works through the 16th, or 2016, and so these projects are projects that came out of an RFP process and covered 2015, 2016. So just a little bit of what happened last year. The CDBG program are, these are funds that are primarily used for infrastructure, public facility improvements, public services, and housing rehab. Over the last year, we funded about $2.7 million in projects. That was about $1.5 million in actual grant funds, about $540,000 of program income. This is money that is returned to the county through our housing rehabilitation program. We also leveraged about $650,000 of local funds. Some of the projects that we completed, or almost completed, is the historic Francis Ermitinger House in Oregon City, ADA ramps in Milwaukee, and then I mentioned our housing rehabilitation program. We completed about 34 units last year. Eleven of those units are in the North Clackamas Revitalization Area. The home program, we funded $1.1 million for new construction last year. We leveraged about $4.6 million for that project through state low-income housing tax credits, and we generated about $100,000 of program income. The project that we spent that money on is called Echoisoterrace. It's located in Oak Grove. This is a 35-unit senior housing project that's owned by Northwest Housing Alternatives. We also have a project ready to start construction. It's called Town Center Greens. It's located in Clackamas. This is a 60-unit alcohol and drug-free housing for families, and we're looking at a June start date. Just some general information on the home program. I've actually been doing this all my life, and I'm always surprised the information that I kind of knew but have never seen put into statistics. The home program began in 1994. Since that time, we've got 36 active affordable housing developments that have been created throughout Clackamas County. They're located in 11 different cities and communities, so they're spread from Sandy to Wilsonville. We have created 1,460 affordable housing units and have expended about $15.7 million in home funds. That expenditure of home funds is leveraged, since the home usually makes up a small percentage of the actual development. So when we looked at the total development during that period, over $200 million has been leveraged by that $15 million of home funds to build affordable housing in Clackamas County. The, the last program we have is our Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Small, it's about $170,000, but it's really important because it's primarily the only funding we have to fund the three homeless shelters in Clackamas County. That would be the Annie Ross House, which is our family homeless shelter run by Northwest Housing Alternatives, our domestic violence shelter run by Clackamas Women's Services, and Springwater Inn, which is our youth shelter that is run by the inn. The funds, if you look at the executive summary of the action plan, we kind of break some of this out, but I think it's important to know that when you combine all of the funds that HCD receives, about 50% of that fund goes to housing activities, and about 29% goes to public improvements. And with the expenditure of funds last year through our three programs, we estimate that we created or retained about 242 jobs in the county last year. So that's what we did. Let's talk a little bit about kind of what we're gonna do. I mentioned the two-year plan. It's included in your packet. We had 43 proposals that we received. They requested about $9 million of CDBG funds, and we only had about four. So there were winners and losers in this plan. We did, however, have about $560,000 of carryover funds that we were able to put into the first year. Carryover funds occur when we have projects that come in under budget, or if we have projects that get canceled, and we hold that money and use them in the next year. For this year, we're looking at about $2 million in block grant funds. That is a 2% decrease. The, some of the projects I wanna mention, we've got Lola Street Improvements in Malala, the Annie Ross House Shelter replacement and expansion. This is a multi-year project. Annie Ross House, very old, not very efficient, so the plan is to demolish it and rebuild something that will increase the number of homeless shelter beds that we have there. And then we also have a food bank acquisition and rehab in Colton. Now, the home program, we're at, we're sitting at about $707,000. That's an 8% decrease over last year. And we've got two projects that we're looking at funding. This is all dependent on receiving state money. It's Rondell Court in Malala. It's a, currently, it's a 30-unit affordable housing project. We're going to, and there's three buildings. The plan is to demolish one building and create 17 additional units, so we'd have now a total of 47 out there, and then remodel the remaining units. We're also looking at Cascade Meadows. This is located in the North Clackamas Revitalization Area. It's a 64-unit senior housing project. For the ESG program, 100, about $181,000, so a little increase this year. And as I said, those funds are primarily used to fund the shelters. I also wanna mention something, it's called the Continuum of Care Program. It's an odd program that HUD runs. Odd in the sense that, you know, we're not an entitlement community on this, we have to compete every year. We're receiving about $1.7 million. Housing and Community Development acts as the collaborative applicant. That means we pull applications from seven, or 15 different projects, put it into one application, and then compete for those monies. At the federal level, we've been very successful. With the expenditure of that money, we've been able to create 215 homeless beds, of which half of those beds are filled by families with children. And very excited to say that 70% of the people that come through that program end up in permanent housing. So it's a very successful program. You know, I like to finish on a good note, but I can't, so I just wanna share this one statistic that was a little mind-blowing. Says nationally, since 2010, CDBG program has been reduced by 24%, and the home program has been reduced by 50%. The grant reductions in Clackamas County have not been as severe. Our CDBG program was reduced by 13% and our home program by 37%. So that sounds good, except for the reason why. The reason that our programs were not cut as bad is because the poverty numbers in Clackamas County continue to grow. And, you know, this is consistent with a national trend that's seen a movement of homeless families out of the central cities into the suburban communities. So it's something that we're continuing to see. The need continues to grow, the funds continue to shrink, and we all smile and get the work done. So anyway, thank you, that's all I have. I'd love to answer any questions you've got and open it up for public comment.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Chuck. You gave a very good presentation. I think the community block grant has become a popular target for people wanting money, but you have to get your application in so far in advance. So if people out there are interested in trying to apply for something, now, are we funded through a certain year on the current allocations? Aren't we funded for three years or something?
The, for the CDBG program, like the home program, we receive an annual allocation from HUD. So every year, we receive money. And what Clackamas County has decided to do is, rather than do an annual RFP, we do an RFP that covers multiple years.
And when does that expire?
So we will be accepting proposals again in November of 2016, and that'll cover 2017, 18, and 19 program years.
So you mentioned Malala had some sidewalks, so it's just not a social program, although I think the majority of the money goes- I think the majority of the money goes for that. What else can it be used for besides housing and social services? You mentioned wheelchair ramps, which is infrastructure, sidewalks. What else could be used for that?
So as I mentioned, majority of our funds goes toward housing and that's because all of the home program goes toward housing, plus we have a large housing rehabilitation program that comes out of the block grant program. Of the remaining funds, 29 percent goes to public improvement, so those are infrastructure and public service, I'm sorry, and public facilities. So the Wichita Center in N-C-R-A is a project that we're looking at funding.
And what is that?
That is, I knew I shouldn't have mentioned that.
Well, I'm just trying to, the people who are listening there, just kind of get them a flavor of, because it's a target, I think, you know, everybody is after the C, the community block grant, the CBG funds, and just trying to spread the wealth a little.
So, you know, it is located in a low-income area and it assists, you know, the residents. And, you know, actually, I have an expert here that could tell you exactly what that is.
I probably shouldn't have asked. Sorry, Dan, but, you know, I know you love coming before the commissioner and telling us stuff.
And we're just lucky to have him here.
I know.
So lucky.
I can't even turn the thing off. It's on? Okay. For the record, Dan Johnson, Department of Transportation and Development. The Wichita Center is a project, pardon me, the facility is operated by North Clackamas School District and is a community service facility. They currently house, once the elementary school closed, they relocated a lot of their social service components to that particular facility and provide a lot of community services out of there, like to close closets, some food assistance, et cetera. The project that we are very proud to be partnering with the CDBG funding on is assistance to that particular facility for ADA access, some improvements to the parking. The parking's pretty, for lack of a better term, sketchy right now because it accesses off King Road in a not very safe manner. In addition, there is some necessity for some sewer hookup. There's some sewer, we did the sewer improvements in the N-C-R-A area and so there needed necessity to hook up the sewer service. So we are actually coming forward to the board with our budget as well. We've talked about it in the last budget cycle, to partner our funds with the CDBG money to assist in that project.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So it's, as I said, it can be facilities, so we can actually purchase and rehab facilities like we're doing in Colton. A lot of that money gets used for streets and sidewalks and water lines, infrastructure. That's really kind of the backbone of CDBG, but about 15 percent of the CDBG grant can be set aside for public services also, but that's limited.
Okay.
Commissioner Bernard.
Safe routes to school. I know that some of that money's been used for that. My question is about actually Annie Ross. Annie Ross Center, I assume we're talking about the Milwaukee facility, so city council okayed it?
You know, the, I can't really answer that because I know that there was some issues with the redevelopment plan for the entire campus. So I think that, you know, this is looking at just a specific project, so it's gonna kind of replace onsite an existing project with just a little bit more efficient use.
Yeah, they're very old homes. I mean, I've toured them over the years and, anyway, I can ask that question later because if there's something I can do to help, I'd be happy to help. Annie Ross has been a great partner for the city of Milwaukee. You know, anytime you have housing facilities like that, even those families, you know, it's always of concern to the community, but, you know, in all the years I've lived in Milwaukee, my business is just down the street from Annie Ross House. I mean, it's been a wonderful partner, so if there's anything I can do to help, just let me know.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Savas.
Well, I just wanted to say, as I try to do often when this plan, the annual plan comes forth, is that this is one of those programs, if we don't apply for it, if we don't apply for these federal funds, then they go elsewhere. And so I appreciate the fair distribution of those resources around the county. Malala can be other areas. And, you know, the discussion came up at the Clackamas County Corning Committee last week about the cost and the intensity of auditing and all the federal requirements to make sure that you jump through all the hoops and you meet all the requirements, which has a cost and is somewhat of a burden, but worthwhile when it comes to some of the lower income. And it's not always good news, again, as you pointed out, that it's not good news to hear that poverty continues to climb in Clackamas County, which gets back to jobs and our goals in the county. So appreciate your good work on that. Thank you.
Yes, pursuant to that C4 conversation was some other city officials saying, you know, it's so cumbersome, and I remember Sidney Becker talking about this a lot of times, about the paperwork and what it takes and the compliances that you have to go through, that they think that because of the matches, which include, they continue to go up, our matches, our government's matches have to go up, that it's hardly worth applying for them nowadays. And I think we're gonna see more and more of that. The matches will continue to go up, which means we have to find money in order to get money and then have to comply with all the burdensome paperwork, so that's very interesting.
Well, I'd like to say that one of the ways that sets Clackamas County apart from other community development divisions across the country is the way we manage our projects, recognizing that the federal requirements place an incredible burden on our small communities. Rather than giving them money and making the cities comply with the requirements, we actually use some of those funds to fund a project manager at Community Development and we're the ones responsible for complying with all of those regulations. So we're able to help small communities that normally wouldn't get a block grant because they don't know what Davis Bacon prevailing wage is or how to do a Section Three report, but we do.
No kidding. I think that's extremely valuable. I think it's a good service we're able to give our folks in county.
All right. I think it's time for the public hearing. And so I'm gonna open the public hearing portion. I do have some cards up here. I'll call you up in two and then put two on deck. The first two are Donna Fixx and Brad Albert, followed by Nicholas Lenartz, or Lenarts, I'm not sure, and Martha Mullenan.
Hi, I'm Donna Fixx and I'm from Colton Helping Hands Food Pantry. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to apply for this grant. And I'd like to introduce my board. I have George Abbott. He is our president of our board. I have Debbie Holm, she is our secretary. Why we wanted this grant was, we are in the Colton Community Center. It is old and hasn't had any repairs done to it since 1997, so it needs multiple things. The school building, or the school district owns this building, but they don't have the money to repair it. And so they said, well, we'll sell it to you and then it's your problem. So first of all...
Did you take it? Did you buy it for a dollar?
Oh, we would have loved to have that, but they wanted much more than that. Actually, they wanted $325,000 for it and we got them down to $150,000. We're out there and have been since 2006, I believe it was, when we started this food program with just a few very, very needy people. And it has grown. We have about 155, and that's an estimate, because sometimes we have 130 and sometimes we have almost 200 families come every Tuesday to get food. And they are USDA qualified, which means they sign a sheet saying that they qualify for USDA commodities before they can get food. You wouldn't believe how many people come and tell us that they're homeless, they're living in a tent in the woods, moving every maybe two weeks because that's all the longer they can stay in that spot. We have people come with small children that are living in their cars. We had a gentleman here not too long ago that was living in his pickup truck. I carried the food out to his truck, so I know he was living in it. We just have a lot of needy families. And we do a lot of things in this building, a lot of things. We are a hub for recycling. We recycle pop bottles and we recycle ink cartridges, old ink cartridges, clothes, news, magazines, books. Oh, I can't even think of what always, oh, cardboard. And so people bring this and we get rid of it. We make money on some of it. I know I'm going over my time here. We also have a community garden that is a teaching garden. We have classes ten weeks a year in the spring and then in the fall. And then the class from the Colton High School comes over and takes care of our garden, picks the food on Tuesday morning and brings it in so that we can give the fresh vegetables out of our garden to our clients. Anyway, it's a wonderful thing and we're not the only people that use this building either and we're gonna, we're planning on leaving it open. We have, CPO has an office there, youth sports, we have football, basketball, baseball. They all do their meetings there. Also, it's open for anybody in the entire rural county to come if they need to have a meeting there. We've had, when Molly Cunningham was in charge of the, what was it called? Disaster, when she was in charge of the disaster meeting, she actually had her big meeting out there at our program. We've had funerals there, so it is open for the community to use also during the week. So it is used a lot.
Let me just ask, Chuck, what contribution did we make to make this happen?
So we have $200,000 of CDBG funds in the first year for this project.
Excellent.
And, good, that's wonderful.
That will pay for the building and then that will pay for Chuck's people that he has. They will help us with the repairs that the building needs, like it needs desperately, a new roof and new windows.
Didn't you also apply for our small grants?
Yes, yes, and they help us tremendously. We get, we purchase our fruit and vegetables and we have done that for the last couple of years, yes.
As long as the taxpayers of this county are generous and what they pay to us, we're able to return it and help folks like you. I want to say a shout-out to George Abbott, my good friend, and from Colton, thank you for serving yet again in another important role.
Commissioner Savas.
Well, I just want to thank all the volunteers, yourselves and others, that do what you do out there and, you know, there's one traffic light in Colton, it's Wall Street, and it's not the Wall Street we think of when we talk to our friends about Wall Street.
That's right.
You know, ride along the high school or the school there. I know the building, I know the area, and I really appreciate what you do and it's just, it speaks again to the poverty and the difficulty that people are out there suffering and we're doing our best to round up jobs, to help people put them back to work and programs like this will help those in the interim time. But thank you so much for your volunteering time for others.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I said something the other day about, and if you think about it, you add up the volunteer hours for a variety of work in this county, but even in your organization, you add that up and you put even 15 bucks per hour. There's millions of dollars of volunteer time given throughout this county every year towards benevolent good of the people who are downtrodden, so thank you for your involvement, all of you. Appreciate you showing up today. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Ludlow. My name is Brad Albert. I'm a project manager and civil engineer with the City of Milwaukee and I just wanted to take this opportunity to come before you and thank you for the program. The amount of funds that we received from CDBG money from the past and in this action plan may not seem like a whole lot in the grand scheme of the whole grant program, but the funds that we receive are greatly used and greatly needed in our community. We use the funds primarily for ADA ramp enhancements to allow folks that are disabled, disadvantaged, to be able to move throughout the city without the encumbrances of sidewalk ramps on the corners and being able to use wheelchairs to move throughout the city. And one great part of the program, I believe Chair Ludlow mentioned the increase in matchings, the match dollars go up with the communities. The way ours has been set up is we get to use in-kind matches, a portion of it. So the City of Milwaukee actually designs the projects in-house, prepares our own plans and specs, and then the county helps us with the project manager as far as bid-letting the project and being the project manager for the contract. So that's a great benefit for us that we can absorb the design portion of the project in partnership with the county to make these projects happen. And so, again, I was just gonna be brief, but it is a great benefit to our community and I want you all to know how great a benefit it is.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Savas.
Again, you mentioned the matching funds and that's something that we've been talking about on a number of federal and state venues where there's money or grant monies available. And it seems especially in the case like this that people have a very difficult time building a match in the first place and have more prosperous areas be able to meet the match and less, the disadvantaged areas not be able to meet the match. So it shouldn't be competitive and, you know, it's one of the things I think we're talking about locally as far as saying, hey, with funds, maybe there should be a match, the match should be fixed, and whether it goes above or beyond is, well, if it goes above, it should be irrelevant. It should not disqualify those who don't have the funds, so to keep it an even playing field. So we'll see how we do in that pursuit. Thank you both.
Chair Ludlow, let me just mention something about the match. CDBG program is one of the few federal programs that does not have a required federal match from the jurisdiction. However, Clackamas County has imposed its own local match requirement. So, you know, we have said that CDBG funds would never be involved more than 80 percent in any project and that we asked the locale to come up with the other 20 percent. And so when it was mentioned that we accept in-kind, it's because since it's a local match, we're quite a bit more flexible in what we can accept. So that allows us to help organizations that may not have the money but have the volunteers to come in and paint the building. So anything that saves us money, we say that's a pretty good match for us.
Excellent. Welcome. This is like the first time I've ever put people on deck and they've come up voluntarily on this, so congratulations on that. Thank you. Either one of you could start.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Nicholas Lenartz. I'm with the City of Malala. I wanted to voice support for the funding of our project at Lola Street. It's called street improvement, but it's really street construction. The street itself is gravel. It's widely used by a lot of people. It's a low-income area. As you may know, Malala is suffering from a pretty poor, we lack a lot of pedestrian connectivity. Many, many people in wheelchairs have trouble navigating the streets and this is just a huge win for the city. And so I just, that's all I wanted to say really is, thank you for supporting the project. And also the project at Rondell Court, the City of Malala does not have very much low-income housing. We suffer from a deficit of apartment-style housing, multifamily housing in the city. There are wait lists sometimes up to three years in the city for multifamily housing. There's many reasons why that's the case, but the project at Rondell Court, I think, can open up some opportunities for families of low-income status to have a home and make a life, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Well, we have a Main Street person here, Malala. Her name is Commissioner Tootie Smith.
Oh, yeah.
Main Street, isn't it?
Main Street, yes. My business is on Main Street. Nicholas, what is your position at the city?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I'm the community planner for the City of Malala. I've been there for about six months now, so...
Good for you. The City of Malala is paving streets and putting in new sidewalks. Grange Avenue is the next project and it's such a big deal and it's so welcomed with open arms. I can't even begin to tell you, some of these places haven't had improvements in 50 years and you can imagine what, what, what a nicety that is. It's almost to me a luxury anymore to have a new sidewalk and a road. And it shouldn't be because in Malala, we're very mobile, on our feet, bicycles, children, women pushing baby carriages, people like to walk to the grocery store.
Well, if they can.
If they can, but now they can't because it's clear out, it's safe. That's just to be in my bonnet as well. But thank you for coming and letting us know that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I happened to walk Main Street, Malala, a couple of weeks ago. And I think the biggest, the biggest loss was the giant white horse. Now they've got some mini white horse there that's just going, what happened? Is it shrinking ray headed thing?
It's actually under construction. They're gonna be reopening in the near future.
What are they? That's good to hear.
But working with the, with the, with the developer, I think they also opened up a place in Silverton and they're looking at the white horse. I think it's gonna be called the White Horse of Malala, something similar along those lines.
So they're bringing back the big white horse. I know this isn't Jermaine, but I was gonna.
I heard about this white horse. I wasn't there, but I think it's coming back.
Oh, six months, yeah, probably, that's right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Martha McLennan. I'm the Executive Director of Northwest Housing Alternatives. And I routinely come to these hearings to kind of thank you for the strong partnership that the county has had with our agency for over 30 years now. We have at this point over 500 units of affordable housing in Clackamas County and there is always a desperate need for more. Our vacancy rate right now is less than 2%, economic vacancy, and that's means that it's about the amount of time it takes to clean the carpets, clean the refrigerator and get the next person in. We also have very long wait lists for housing, so we appreciate the support that we get from the county to build more housing and to have the programs to support getting folks into it. Chuck mentioned the Ikkoysow Project. That is in the Oak Grove part of the county. We have just about completed the construction there. We're in the final little stages of doing some work there and we'll be having a reopening party to have, celebrate the, the site and to thank the residents for their patience during the rehabilitation and you'll all be getting invitations for that. That'll probably be in May. Chuck also mentioned the Home Base Program. So that is our program that provides eviction prevention and rapid rehousing services. It is modest amounts of financial assistance delivered at the point that folks need it along with case management to either keep them from losing their housing and becoming homeless, because we know that if we can keep them from becoming homeless, that's a much more cost-effective way to serve folks than it is to let people become homeless and then go all the way back through the process of getting rehoused. And then we also do rehousing, so people who have become homeless, working to get them back in housing as quickly as possible. The program has been in operation since 2009 and has had a roller coaster ride of funding, starting with some federal stimulus funds, losing some funding, getting some great funding commitments from the county. And now we're in a phase of really having much more stabilized funding with a combination of sources, from the federal government, the state government, the county government, and from the fundraising that we've been able to do. So we really appreciate the funding that's coming from both the, the funding sources, the federal funding sources that we're talking about today, but also from the county general fund commitments that you have made over the years and I know are in consideration again this year. That program has an 80% success rate, so that is a situation where we might provide 1,500, $2,000 worth of assistance to pay off some back rent or some utility charges while somebody restabilizes and gets ready to be independent and self-sufficient again. So what that 80% is, is after we provide the last financial assistance, we provide three more months of case management. After that, we evaluate whether people are still stably housed at the six-month marker and that's that 80% number. So that's a very important resource for the community. We're very happy for the support that the board has shown to that. The Annie Ross House. So we are looking again at redeveloping our campus in Milwaukee, which would involve redeveloping the Annie Ross House shelter and expanding that capacity in the shelter. We are in the process of reapplying to the City of Milwaukee for reconsideration of that land use. So we should know that in the next six to nine months. And if, if the land use process does not work, then we won't be able to take advantage of this funding source. But if it does work, then we will be moving ahead with that. So the funding that, that is in this plan is for the shelter as a, the component of that campus that you would be supporting. As Chuck mentioned, that building is old. It's in its 40s. It's very crowded. It's five bedrooms, three baths, can have 20, 25 people in it at a time, sharing a very small kitchen, dining room and living room, sharing those baths. What we would like to do is to expand that facility, give people a little bit more privacy and dignity and have a really durable building going forward that can serve more people. So that's the goals.
I apologize for not acknowledging that I actually know you and I want to talk to you about your printing.
My handwriting, sorry.
Commissioner Bernard.
Oh, I just want to say that, you know, many of the, these projects would never have happened if it weren't for, for your efforts. So the county owes you a lot of thanks. In Wilsonville, in Milwaukee, throughout the county, you've been a great partner. And I think what's important is that you are a regional, or Clackamas County asset, probably a regional asset. I don't really know what else you do outside the county, but, but, you know, getting a project like the one in Wilsonville Dunn just takes so many people and so many, you know, applicants to make a project successful. And, and you have guided many of those projects to a successful conclusion. I appreciate your help.
I ditto Jim's remarks. Thank you, Martha.
I will say about the, the Wilsonville Creekside development, which I was very involved in, having sold the property to the city, is that it was interesting to go through that process and for everybody to guess on how many seniors actually continue to drive. And I think you were wrong because that place is packed with cars. You think, well, husband, wife, there's only one car. Not, they both have cars. And that's been, I think, the big problem with that area is parking and it will continue until you find some other remedy. But I know it's tough to figure those things and they, and really just as a quick history, the reason the Creekside development came forward was because of the loss of the Thunderbird Mobile Club, which was a huge manufactured home site where people could live very frugally and reasonably, but then they developed it and now it is more apartments than I've ever seen and I've been there for 40 years. It's amazing how many apartments are there and how quickly they're filling them up. But they ain't cheap either and that has driven the poor and the challenged away from, from that area. So it really did hurt Wilsonville. And, and even though that's a great development at Creekside, it doesn't come near touching all the people that were touched during the closing of that. So good job on that and we appreciate your support and we would like to supporting you because the alternative has been, this partnership that we have is, the other alternatives are not nearly as good for our county and good for the people as our, as our partnerships with you have been. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public portion and announce that there will be no decision on this today. This will be coming back on the 30th of April for adoption. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, I'll announce the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Development Agency for the next item. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, this next public hearing is the consideration of a resolution for a supplemental budget involving the Clackamas County Development Agency. I'm going to ask our Development Agency Manager, Mr. Dan Johnson, to give a report and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Board. We are before you today here to discuss supplemental budget specific to our North Clackamas Revitalization Area. Essentially, it's a housekeeping issue. The supplemental before you today actually reduces the appropriations within the North Clackamas Revitalization Area by about $800,000. The reasoning is related to the fact we have a number of inter-fund transfers that occur between our 300 accounts and our 400 accounts. When we developed the fiscal year 14, 15 budget, we were under the impression that our inter-fund transfer was going to be less in '12, '13 than expected. When in, factually, the finance department transferred all that money. So in short, we didn't have the, we got the money earlier than we needed it. And so that money's already been transferred. So to true up our books, to true up that budget, the supplemental before you today is necessary to ensure that we are accurately representing our budget as stated. So it is, the hearing today has been notified on the county newspapers, consistent with budget law. And if there are any questions the board may have, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any, any questions, Commissioners? All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. There's just a few of you left back there, so I'm eyeballing you. And so there being, nobody wants to testify, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County Development Agency Supplemental Budget greater than 10% and budget reduction for the fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Second.
Second. All right. Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Smith with the second. Any further discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 4-0. We will now adjourn as a Development Agency and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, which is the Consent Agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda.
I wanted to apologize for putting him through that, though.
With, with what?
Dan.
Oh, Dan? Oh, I know, it was really tough presentation. Dan, thank you. Thank you, yeah. We'll call you up here. Yes, it's time to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Consent Agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, Approval of a Revenue Provider Agreement with Providence Health Plan to Provide Emunization Services to Assigned Members of the Clackamas County Health Centers. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of a Change of Control of the Wichita Sanitary Service Franchise to Waste Management of Oregon Inc. Under the Finance Department, We Have a Resolution Approving the Submission of Fiscal Year 2015, 2016 County Assessment Functions, Funding Assistance, CFA, Grant Application for the County Assessor's Office, A Resolution for a Clackamas County Transfer of Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2014, 2015, and a Resolution for Clackamas County Budgeting of New Specific Purpose Revenue for Fiscal Year 2014, 2015. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under our Technology Services Department, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Clackamas County Broadband Express and Clackamas County Service District Number One and Tri-City Service District for Fiber Connections. And finally, our Juvenile Department, We Have Approval to Submit a Grant Application for the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program Grant Through the U.S. Department of Justice. That concludes the Consent Agenda.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Savis, second by Commissioner Smith to approve the Consent Agenda. Discussion, Commissioner Bernard.
I just want to say that I, I know Scott and Jackie Kaiser my whole life and, you know, being a garbage man or woman is not an easy job. And I was at Milwaukee City Council when they presented to them and I gotta tell you, I'm thrilled for them. They're able to retire after working all those years. So congratulations and I hope you enjoy the rest of your life in retirement.
Having grown up in Oak Grove, you know, right at Rex Putnam High School, right behind that, the Spady family lived and they owned Oak Grove Disposal. Did quite well, eventually sold out like a lot of these small ones did, but they, they did a great service. And going back to what you were talking about, it is a hard job. And back then, way back then, they used to have those containers in the ground, you know. You would, people unfortunately would load up, load up and then jump on it to stuff as much as they could and those poor garbage men had to pull those containers out of the ground and empty them. It was, they've since, of course, outlawed the things and rightfully so, but yeah, it is a tough job. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll ask for the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 4-0. And now, excitement time. It's time for the County Administrator Update. Drum roll.
All righty. So I've got lots of good news to share with you this morning.
We like that.
First is, is our Cable Communications folks. Boy, they keep getting awards. So we've got, got to recognize them and praise them for, this time around, Cable Communications was honored with a Telly Award, which recognizes outstanding work in local programming. The Cable Division's production of Inside Clackamas, Hops to Tap, was selected for its use of graphics. And this was selected from about 12,000 entries from all 50 states and actually included other countries around the world. That made up the competition for this year's Telly Award. So it's very competitive and we're very proud of our Cable Division staff for being able to do such great work. Then the next thing I wanted to share, it's another award. The Clackamas County American Medical Response, a River Safety and Rescue Program, received what is the highly regarded Nicholas Rosecrans Award last month. And this was done at the National Emergency Medical Services Today Conference. The award is given annually to an agency or an individual demonstrating excellence in leadership in injury prevention. Clackamas County was recognized for its efforts to stop accidental drowning tragedies at the High Rocks Park on the Clackamas River. So Clackamas, our County AMR, worked with local nonprofits and hospitals to provide education on water safety and at the park itself, provide warnings and assistance to visitors there as well. So great work there. And then just yesterday, our Clackamas County Water Environment Services led some 23 high school students on a field trip to the Three Creeks Natural Area where they helped do a survey for amphibians on behalf of the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. The students found thousands of tadpoles and an abundance of what are Pacific Chorus frogs, you know, the little green ones? And these represent a sign of a healthy habitat and good water quality, which is one of the commitments our Water and Environment Services Department makes to our community. I also have.
Did you say 2,300 students?
23 high school students.
23? Oh, gosh.
High school, not 100.
High school.
Yeah.
Not 100, yeah, good. Yeah, maybe 2,300 tadpoles.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
I, I also, boy, just the good news keeps on rolling. So I, I received a copy of a very nice letter from a Mr. Kenneth Everett, who's the Executive Director with Forests Forever. That's, and that organization operates the Hopkins Demonstration Forest just to the south of Oregon City, basically acknowledging the excellent work of staff from our Department of Transportation and Development. And he specifically acknowledges Everett Hay for the exceptional work he did in removing a large maple stump along Brockway Road. So it's not often we get letters like this. Very happy to receive that as well. And then finally, I did want to say, and Chair, I know you're gonna talk a bit about what's going on next week with regard to the Emergency Management Institute, but as a result of a large number of county staff and leadership attending what will be the Emergency Management Institute in Emmitsburg, Maryland, we will not have our regularly scheduled policy sessions and administrative issues and update session for next week. There will be a regularly scheduled business meeting, scheduled for Thursday evening of next week. And of course, we have scheduled on that agenda consideration of second reading for the medical marijuana ordinance. And that's my report.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, Communication, we'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. I've been busy going back and forth to Salem and testifying on some bills. The Willamette Falls Locks Bill was received well. The Federal Lands Bill that AOC endorsed as well as Clackamas County on a study to look at the transfer of federal forest lands to the state. And then this week, Senate Bill 716 that this board has decided to support on a pilot program for industrial lands in three counties in Oregon. And it's been very interesting, you get into the building and you just don't get out. Oh, I need, you know, talking to old friends and, and the folks on the issues of the day. So it's been very. So it's been very interesting, but the trek down to Salem, I'm glad I don't have to make it anymore because it is very tiring. And as Dawn said, I will be attending the emergency management next week with Chair Ludlow, and all of us that are going, that travel and expense has been paid by FEMA grants. But it's a wonderful opportunity for Clackamas County to be prepared for an eventual natural disaster in our county, what to do in the event that we can't travel, we don't have communication, so we'll come back smarter, I'm sure.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, Commissioner Savis.
Thank you, Chair. I was at, get the fun stuff out of the way first, I was at, even though I arrived late this morning at J-PAC meeting, at the end of the meeting, I was handed a certificate that I thought I would pass on.
I got one too.
Certificate of appreciation presented to the Honorable John Ludlow for his leadership and contributions to the Climate Smart Communities Project. So I thought I would...
(laughing).
We have to have our fun when we can here.
Tongue in cheek, who did this?
At least they have a sense of humor, Paul, thank you.
They actually do that?
Jim got his last night as well.
Yeah, I got mine and Martha's last night.
So congratulations, Chair John Ludlow.
Did you get one, Paul?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good, because you were certainly in strangle.
Well, I am the only one that has not received it, and I am thankful. I consider myself in good stead.
So anyhow, now that I got the fun stuff out of the way, I did want to talk about, I was delayed this morning, so I ended up leaving to go to the J-PAC meeting later than I norm, I normally leave really early in the morning, like six thirty, so I could beat the traffic. So this morning, I headed out at quite late, seven thirty, seven forty-five, and the traffic was absolutely terrible. It took me half, it took me half an hour longer to make the same trip. And, and because of some trucks that got, I won't say trucks that got jack, I think they were jackknife, but they took up the whole intersection, I had to drive around the block, and so I was forced to see some of the development that was going on there, which brought me really to the discussion I'm going to talk about today briefly, and that is that there's so many high-density multi-story buildings going up in the area around Portland, and you're hearing a lot about, and there's no parking, there is not much in the way of services as far as groceries or so forth, and it's really creating a lot of pushback that you hear in Clackamas often about preservation neighborhoods and access to services and all those types of things. So the, the noise or the newspaper articles and some of the complaints that are happening in Clackamas are also being heard in, you know, in Portland, because of a lot of these developments and neighborhoods being wiped out due to development. So I think there's a lot of sensitivity, whether it's Oak Lodge or other areas, Lake Oswego, you know, Wilsonville, areas where neighborhoods are potentially threatened at times, and people pushing back about, wait a minute, we moved here, we expected a certain quality of life, we wanted to plan on staying here in this neighborhood for, for, you know, for their lifetime, and to see some of those areas that are somewhat threatened at times due to developments that are pushing them out. So I think we have a responsibility to that. At the same time, we have also have a responsibility to try to create jobs, but that shouldn't really come at the price of, of a loss of a neighborhood or a community. So I think that's the sensitivity that we hear, we hear often, and, you know, as when it comes to zoning, whether it's preservation neighborhoods, we ought to find a way to somewhat accommodate that for those areas that have been assured that we would actually deliver on those, on the promise to do that. So that's my message for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard.
So I understand first that on April first, there was a sighting of Bigfoot on Mount Hood. And I, I also heard that the school ran into the monster from the Black Lagoon when they were looking at it. By the way, when, when Bigfoot sighting went on tourism website, they had more than thirty thousand hits on April Fool's Day. So, I mean, those little things like that are huge. And one of the tourism's folks were, was flying back from Dallas or something where they're doing their tourism activity, and got everyone on the plane to look through that viewfinder?
Oh.
And took a photo of that, and they had thousands of hits on that. So those little things make a big difference.
Wow, that's fun.
But, you know, I noticed on my drives to Salem or around, since the port of Portland closed, you see a lot more trucks with those big boxes on them. What do you call those boxes?
Containers?
Container boxes on them. Just the other day, I was driving on two oh five, and there was a whole, you know, probably three or four of them ahead of me, and they really slowed down when they hit those hills. Last, yesterday, I went to M-PAC, which I love going to, and received my certificate, but a lot of it was about, Portland has not done any comp planning for over thirty-something years. They haven't adjusted that. And the, the mayor said that Portland has already absorbed ten thousand new people when they made that promise that they would, Portland's willing to absorb all those people, and, and they have exceeded that, and will continue to exceed that. And they're doing that by some of those things. Now, that is social engineering. You know, they, they densify, don't allow the parking, to push people onto bus and light rail. That's very true, I totally agree. We're not looking at doing that in Clackamas County. We're not looking at Oak Grove forcing people not to have places to park cars. But I gotta, you know, I also went to the PMLR, Portland, Milwaukee Light Rail Project is under budget by over forty million. You know, and the sad part is, the federal government wants that money back. So they've spent some money, they had to get approval for some, and so one of the things, whether you agree with light rail or not, we just went through a tough economy. Five thousand one hundred and seventy-one construction jobs were created. Thirteen point five thousand jobs in total were created. Couple of, eight quiet zones were created, and you guys will love this. Sixty-five million in bike and pedestrian facilities connecting people to the orange line were built. Ten point three miles of new or replacement sidewalks, and forty million in roadway improvements. The, the great thing, whether you like light rail or not, is that during this tough economy, a lot of people had jobs. And I, I think that in many ways, the project, while it was very efficiently done, it was, of course, challenging, a lot of folks had, had the ability to, to work. One point eight million square feet of stormwater, bios whales were created. And so it was an interesting discussion. There are a lot of celebrations that will be taking place, which I'll be putting on my calendar, and we'll let you know when they are. But it was the first meeting we had in two years, so...
Wow.
Some people forgot, and some people aren't even there, that we even had such a committee, and I forgot, I was still on that committee.
So you said they're under budget by forty million?
Yeah.
So can we use that to pay off some debt?
Actually, it is true that we will get a refund, but what that amount will be, won't be determined possibly until twenty twenty. But the federal, we, we could get it all back, I mean, but the federal government gets fifty percent of the savings, and we get a share, unless you refinance, unless you use their financing, which Milwaukee did, then they won't get any. We could get it, you know, three million, but it's gonna be a while to figure that out.
Paul, go ahead.
So I just wanted to, you know, I know that during the process of that, that, that committee, the Clackamas County portion of the committee, I suppose, the committee that you were on representing the county on PMLR, wasn't there, there were some safety projects that were cut due to funding, right? There was X amount of funding, so there were some things that were cut back. Isn't there an opportunity to re, to do those?
They did add back.
Instead of just giving the money, well, I, I think there's value to bringing the money back, but when it comes to safety, the, the safety elements is what I'm speaking to, not any of the luxurious items.
I'm saying they did add some of those projects back, as they saw, as they go down the line and, and their contingency is, isn't used up, which they never went below the line in contingency, and they were able to add back some of those projects. You know, we talked, we heard there was going to be some extra money, so they proposed the Tacoma Parking Station, and the federal government said no. They proposed the electronic ticket thing, and they said, the federal government said yes, and they added some more covered sites, and the federal government said yes, and then the federal government said no on various other things. I think that light rail, and I'd love to meet with the sheriff, and I know the city of Milwaukee, everybody's working on a public safety plan for the opening of that site. In the first, but a lot of that stuff, I don't know that's been determined, but I haven't heard anything about that, so it'd be great to have maybe a work session on what's happening on that.
Well, you know, the, they did announce that they would have, not necessarily a closed platform, but a ticketed requirement both on Park Avenue and at Sellwood, so I think that, that was a great gain for us. I did happen to meet, Commissioner Smith and I, with the sheriff yesterday, and I asked him for his plan, he briefly went over it, asked for the increased security for the Park Avenue station, so we can certainly have him come in and talk more about that. I will say, now this Climate Smart thing, that was a tongue-in-cheek thing, obviously. I, Climate Smart is a program which, if it's fully implemented, will be two hundred and fifty million dollars a year from somewhere. And I might add that, you know, if you think of that in this extent, is that is about the amount, just in one year of expenditures, that we would need to expand two oh five to three lanes in each direction. So this is misplaced priorities by Metro, in my opinion, and it goes on and on and on. As, as they said when I mouthed off here a few months ago in regards to, you know, two oh five, which it just isn't, isn't just this commission that's been crying for that extra lane in each direction, it's previous commissions, this, these commissions as well. And Metro simply said, well, why build it? It'll just fill up. Now, if we said that about buses, well, they're all full, but why buy any more? They'll just fill up. That wouldn't go over very good with Metro, would it, or Tri-Met? So anyway, tongue-in-cheek, that was pretty funny.
Want to have that framed for you?
Yeah, I'll let Bernie take care of it right away.
You gonna pose for a picture?
No, I doubt that very seriously. Thanks for the offer, though. Okay, so I did go to Fred Meyer Distribution Center and a great tour that they had. When I was a carpenter foreman, I was in charge of building a half million square foot building in Wilsonville, Oregon. They, they had under one roof, one million square feet. They have a hundred and seven tractor rigs that haul trailers in and out of that facility every day, and a thousand in and out trips a day at there, which is just incredible. We got to go into the food storage area, then we got in the chilled area, fifty degrees, and then we walked into the ten below freezer, and then the twenty below for the ice cream, that's what they keep them as, twenty below, and we made a short visit in those areas. You know, what's really hurt them is, we talk about the slowdown that the longshoreman did at Terminal Six, and the container, containers are now being hauled on the, on the highway. Fred Myers now hauls all of that stuff to Tacoma by, by truck. And you know, you, we, you can talk about the environment, we can talk about, you know, air pollution, we can talk about the weight miles traveled on these roads and the danger of that. Just think of what this area's lost. We've just announced again this morning, OPB, that we've lost over ninety percent of container ships, container usages and transfers at that port, which is just a darn crying shame. And you know, it'll hurt every small business and unfortunately be very inflationary and drive up our prices. But Fred Myers was, you know, they're part of Kroger, and they now are the largest part of Kroger. They outproduce every other store they have, from KFCs to, to others. But it was just an incredible thing to see. I also visited yesterday Super Genius in, in Oregon City. The owners gave us a great tour of that. It's fantastic to see these people who do game design, video game design, and they had a sweatshop of people in there banging on computers, they have, I think, in the neighborhood of thirty employees. They're on Main Street of Oregon City, they like it there, and they're really look forward, looking forward to Blue Heron and it happening, and they'd like to create their own little, own little mini cluster of, of electronic geniuses down there on Main Street in Oregon City, which I think is really great. Oregon City storefronts have improved greatly through the use of some funds that they're, unfortunately, it's hurting renewable, I'll let that go, but they've really included, improved some of the storefronts, including to the building that we are, the old Oddfellows building that we're redoing the inside of, and they already did the outside for our legal staff and the district attorney. So that was a great one. Don't forget, the bite at Mount Hood is this Saturday. Many of us are going to that, and then we had three of the commissioners attended the Clackamas County Business Association meeting on Wednesday. We are going, as has been said, to the Regional Disaster Preparedness Course operated by FEMA. Many of us are, and during my absence, the county will be in able hands of our vice chairman, Commissioner Jim Bernard, that's right. During this week, you know, and I often say this, that people come to these meetings or they watch these meetings, and this is, this is really where some of the action takes place, but the majority happens in our policy sessions, which are on Tuesdays. You can go online, and you can see where they've separated each of our sessions during that day. And so if you're interested in one, you have the agenda, and you certainly have our audio to listen where we make decisions. Some of those decisions this week have been to dispose of some development agency surplus property. We voted five out of direct staff to get rid of those, they're really tiny pieces, many of them are not billable, and really almost practically worthless. We agreed, I'd say reluctantly, towards the Red Soils Master Plan Update, and I think it's a dedication of a hundred and thirty thousand or so initially, but up to a half a million, and we'll have to talk about that with our budget committee. We also finally got an, an area on, a committee on transportation. We finally have determined, and by the way, this is a big committee, Paul, how many people are on that committee?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one people, what a committee, huh? We appointed Paul Savis as our commission representative, and Bill Avison as our business representative, and in fact, we endorsed every recommendation that came out of C4 in that regard. We also agreed with the process and the interesting diagram on how we will employ an independent auditor. I thought that was a good step in the right direction, and we've been working on this for a while. It was been pushed by Commissioner Savis and agreed to us last year, but even the hiring hasn't, we haven't gone out to hire anybody yet. Legislative update. Hey, we sent a letter, we're sending a letter, all, five of us are signing, thanking the people involved in getting us some of our secure rural schools funds. I think it's going to be near a million or a little bit more, there might be a little bit more than that, but that is to replace the timber, supposedly timber revenue lost in timber cutting in this county, which used to amount to twelve and even fourteen million dollars a year. So it is a small comparison with that, but definitely necessary, and we put that money to good use in the county. I would like to tell you about the Clackamas County unsung hero this week. It is Reinhardt Wildshut, and they call him Rein, of Infinity, Infinity Works, I think it's called. Infinity Works is a nonprofit organization that utilizes opportunities, individuals, and businesses within our communities to create lasting impressions, avenues of change, and hope for local youth. Rein is dedicated and has been for years trying to provide opportunities that broaden horizons for families in his community. One portion of his program offers individuals and families a way to bond in ways they have not yet imagined. He has spent countless hours, dollars, and time to create and facilitate, quote, "shared and peak experiences," end quote, allowing so many families to create memories that last a lifetime. He focuses on providing services to single families, at-risk youth, and widows and the elderly. Each project involves some of these families in need of support, and the empathy and compassion Rein shares is a beautiful thing to witness. He truly makes a difference in the lives of these people and helps them with tools to succeed. So congratulations to Rein Wildshut. And now Mary's going to put up something on the TV screen that will share with you that we have town halls, and one of them's coming up. April twenty-first, six thirty PM at Stafford, in Stafford area, at Athie Creek Middle School, it's on Borland Road, and it's, the topic will be to grow a vibrant economy. I expect in that particular area, considering all that's going on and not going on in that area, we'll have a few people show up. The next topic is build a strong infrastructure at Milwaukee High School on Wednesday, June seventeenth, then ensure safe and healthy communities in Canby on August thirty-first. And then the final topic of this year at our town halls will be to honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. That'll be held appropriately at the mountain at Welch's, the resort. That'll be held appropriately at The Mountain at Welch's, the resort at The Mountain, Wednesday, October 28th. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before us this day, this business meeting is adjourned.